Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is starting to get to the old hat now. I appreciate everybody that came out this afternoon. This is the biggest crowd that we've had at a forum today. And I thank all of you for coming out and listening to what we got to say. When I decided to run, it wasn't a decision I made lightly. I was working in Tennessee and a friend of mine started on me about running for county commissioner. And I said, "I don't know that I want to do that if I'm going to retire. That's trading one job for another, and that may be the worst job of all." Well, I'm a native of Walden County. Been here all my life and planned to be here all of my life. I retired out of the construction industry after 45 years. And I can honestly say in 45 years, I've never been out of a job unless I wanted to be. And I think that's something to brag on. The last 25 years, I've been in construction management and program management. And I've managed other people's assets and other people's money. And like I told Gordon earlier, when you're managing other people's assets and other people's money, if you're not making them money, pretty soon you're out of a job. So I think that responsible management of the county assets will be a real asset to the county. I'm the only one in the race that hasn't worked for the county. I don't have anybody in my family that works for the county. And if you want a real change in Walden County government, vote Sandy Jack Brown, District Two, County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I've got to tell you guys, if you'd prefer, we've got a cordless mic here. If you just stand there at the chair, we're going to use a podium to hold you up. Want to come up here?
I appreciate the opportunity. Is anybody here? I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Certainly, I've spent a tried time and tried campaign. I've lived in Walden County all my life. I have a small business in Walden County. I've been in this for 40 years. I have $3, two kids, two here in Walden County, the others CPA here at the council. I have nine grandkids, which sometimes that's a challenge, dealing with all these grandkids.
Ken, I'm sorry. Try to speak up a little more. I can't hear you that well. Oh, God, mine.
Can you hear them?
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, I have nine grandkids. Our county has made the great strides in the last two years. Florida Chamber of Commerce just had a report out. There are two counties in the state of Florida that fastest-growing counties. Ninety days in one of them, Walden County is the other. And we have the lowest interest rate. I mean, we have the lowest mortgage rate, second or first. We may be number one now, I don't know, in the state of Florida. We have the lowest unemployment rate. Right now, our county is growing faster than any county in the state. We have a, we're putting $100 million per month in that, at the same as dwelling home. But our county is moving forward. I've worked diligently trying to promote and get the 331 corridor, four lanes and the bridge. That's going to promote a lot of development along that corridor. It's going to make people's commute back and forth to South Walden to work. This is going to make it safe. This is going to make it safer for our tourists that are coming to our county. And as we look at the Los Heysland Industrial Park, look what we have there. It's just growing. We've got a lot of trucks, a truck stop coming in. We're going to have a hotel. We're going to have an IHOP. We're going to have a break-in or digger ship. We're going to have a tire mart and also an I-20, maybe called I-10, truck sales that sell trucks and trailers. We've got $9 million to lobby in Tannahasty this year for the infrastructure in Los Heysland plus the Red Lake Bridge in South Walden.
You've got to give me 15 seconds more if you'd like to hurry.
We've got $1 million of out-of-beach for the wastewater treatment plant and $3 million for infrastructure. We're looking at some companies who would like to locate there. We're still trying to negotiate with them. It's going to be a great opportunity. That's 200 jobs in Los Heysland. As the county, we need to continue to move county forward.
My name's Danny Gladwell, and I'm running for county commissioner for District Two.
And he has a built-in mic.
And I've got a built-in mic. The reason I'm running for county commissioner is because I spent my life in public service. I was a deputy sheriff in this county for 22 years. I was the first director of the Department of Corrections when the county was in control of that. And while I was director, we were, we became the first criminal justice agency in Walden County history to be accredited by the state of Florida. I'm on the board of directors at the Fair Association. I'm the current vice president. I've been the president. I'm on the board of directors of the Teachers Credit Union. And I've coached little league basketball, baseball, softball, and I've refereed just about all of it as well. And I say all that to say this, Walden County needs leadership that is responsive to the needs of the people, that is not going to continue to kick problems down the road and continue to ignore what the citizens need, but is going to focus on what ordinary citizens need. For too long, we have focused on what special interests want instead of what you want. And if I'm elected to be your county commissioner, I will listen to you. I will do what you ask me to do. And I will work hard to bring quality economic development to Walden County so that our children can have a decent job that will pay them a living wage. Far too many of our children either have to leave this county or they have to work two and three jobs just to make the ends meet. And that's not acceptable to me, and I don't believe it's acceptable to the rank-and-file Joe out on the street. So if you want a change in county government, if you want a county government that is responsive to you, if you want a county government that will work on problems and will fix problems instead of working on, instead of kicking them down the road for somebody else to worry about or making things worse, which is what has happened, if you want somebody who will take your interest at heart instead of the special interest at heart, then I ask you to vote for Danny Gladwell for county commissioner, District Two, on August 26th. Thank you.
We'll start, I guess we'll start right here with you, Sandy, on the first question. Why are you running for this office and why do you feel you're qualified to do so?
As I said, I've been in management for the last 25 years in construction management, off and on. I have a state-certified general contractor's license that I keep back here. But when I look around and I see just like county equipment, and I see equipment sitting in one place for two or three weeks, and I think, well, if we've got enough equipment and we've got this equipment sitting in one place for two or three weeks, we must have way too much equipment. I mean, that's not very responsible management. I look at, when I decided to run, I have missed one county commissioner's meeting since the last of October, when I decided to run, first of November. And I can tell you, when I see those guys spending money sometimes, I can tell that they're spending somebody else's money because that's exactly the way they're spending it. If they were spending their own money, I guarantee you that they'd be a little bit more careful about how they spend it. And that's one of the, one of the issues that I decided, that helped me make up my mind to run for county commissioner. Thank you.
I've been on the board 12 years. I've seen a lot of good times and seen a lot of bad times. We've got economy worries, land prices booming, development movement booming, and everything sold on price. Then I've seen the downturn in the economy. Everything crashed. And on top of that, we had the oil spill. And that was another thing that devastated our county. Working with the TDC, we put things in place where we could advertise our beaches. CNN was advertising our beaches. We had oil on the beaches. We had balls on the beach. We had, we had to make sure that the media and put the right information out. So we launched a campaign to advertise and put out there our beaches for clean. We opened our business. That was a challenge we had. And that has paid off. You can look at how we're doing now. Like I said before, building permits are up, averaging $100 a month. Our county is growing. We've got job opportunities here. I think we're going to have a lot of growth in Los Heysland Park. And we continue to look at issues like stormwater. We have stormwater issues all over. We're going to have to deal with those issues. And they're not, they're not minor. They're going to be expensive. Also, 331 corridor, we've got to make sure we have the infrastructure in place to supply the business. We're going to have wastewater treatment plants. We're going to have a water supply. And we're going to have to get that done in the near future because once that corridor is finished, that four lane is finished, I think you're going to see development. I think you're going to see hotels. You're going to have to see businesses, restaurants, or anything else that come up on that corridor. And this is going to be a good thing for our county. Looking at the 331 corridor of Paxton to Penea Springs here, we're doing a PD&E study. The state's doing a PD&E study right now. That front is going to start moving forward. And we need to continue to lobby Tannahasty to make sure they onboard and try to push these things through because those corridors need to be safe and functional. Also, we're trying to make the intersection in South Walden on 98. We just proved the General Rambo Street. We're going to have a signalization turn lanes there and make that, that section, that corridor safe for the rest of the city.
Go ahead, Danny. My question was, why am I qualified and why am I running?
Why are you running? What do you feel, why do you feel you're...
Well, as far as qualifications, I'm a graduate of Troy State University. When I went to work at the sheriff's office, I started as a corrections officer. I worked, I was promoted to deputy sheriff. I was then promoted to sergeant, then to lieutenant, then to patrol commander. And the last four years I was at the sheriff's office, I was the chief of administration, which means I was over finance, purchasing, human resources, legal affairs, community affairs, school resource officers. You name it, I was in charge of it just about it. So, and then I've said, as I said, I was a corrections officer for four years. And I've been on numerous boards in the county. All of those jobs, I think, have shown me what we need to do as far as the county government. So as far as qualifications, I think that's why. As far as why I'm running, I've got four children who are adults from age 25 to 21. And I want those four children to have the opportunity. I don't want anybody to give them anything, but I want them to have the opportunity to work and to live in Walden County, to stay here and make a living wage at a job that pays a fair living wage where they can improve their lives and where they can raise a family. And I don't think that's any different from most of y'all, but that's what you want for your children and your grandchildren. And to do that, first of all, government needs to get out of the way in a lot of cases. We are overtaxed, overspent, overregulated, and we need to change that. But we also, there are some things that government needs to do, providing quality infrastructure. We have dropped the ball on numerous occasions all over this county in providing the type of infrastructure that draws good jobs, not, you know, all jobs are good, but we want jobs that pay a living wage. That's the one we should be focused on. And that's what I want to do if I'm elected county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Is this mic working? Can you hear me okay? Right into it? All right. Question number two, and let's start with you this time, Ken. What is the very first issue you will try to change and how will you change it?
We have, we have... We have a lot of issues. Needs to say that, you know, I don't know what the first issue is. I deal with all these issues on a daily basis. Like I said, our infrastructure needs are growing. And looking at the wastewater treatment facility in, water down Highway 331 is a big issue. Those are major projects. That project on 331 tying three corridors and Penea Springs together is going to be a $30 or $40 million project. Where's the money coming from? We can't tax people and bring the tax money in. We're going to have to go to the state and figure out how the state can help subsidize these things because we can never get that done without the state's help. But it'll pay off in benefits in the long run because all those businesses is going to locate along that corridor. Also, we're looking right now, beach re-nurishing. The process is going through, we're going to re-nurish the beaches. But we've got to go through the process of getting the landowners to either sign easements or get renters permission to go on their property so we can put sand on it. These are, these are issues that we deal with every day. Stormwater issues in South Walden is growing too. I mean, we've got a lot of issues, a lot of holes flooded down there. Looking at some way, we've got a half a million dollars we approved about two or three weeks ago to put the work, engineer and design work on those projects in South Walden. These are issues that are major today. There are a lot of homeowners in South Walden.
Ken, let me interrupt you a second. A lot of folks have asked me to do that question because they're saying you do have a lot of issues to deal with. What, I mean, you've got to have a number one priority or one that you think you want to deal with.
Well, that's what, the number one priority, this infrastructure, one of the things, normal priorities is infrastructure. We've got to put infrastructure in places to, the amount of tourists and the amount of people that are coming to our county, we've got to be able to handle that traffic and handle that traffic in a safe manner. That's, that's one of the major issues we have. And also, healthcare, healthcare is another issue that we have here in the county. Sacred Heart Hospital is going to build a $30 million project that's going to be great for our county.
You can have it, yes, I can. Oh, did you? Okay. You're done.
I stopped at the one when y'all started.
Okay. I forgot. You're a good time speaker.
Well, there is, of course, there's numerous issues that we could talk about. But I think as far as why is the first thing you would want to do when you walk into office, and that is to change the culture of the board of county commissioners. For too long, we have kicked problems down the road. I've been going to county commission meetings for the last 10 years, some because I had to, some because I wanted to. Although wanting to is sort of, maybe indicates my mental health, but... But when you go to those meetings, you hear the same stuff over and over and over and over. We're dealing with the same issues we were dealing with 10 years ago. But you go to the south end and you find people in front of their houses, there's ditches that's got oil in it that you could just about scoop up. And we were talking about that at county commission meetings 10 years ago, and nothing has been done. There's roads in the north end of this county that you could drive a truck through some of the holes in them. And if you manage to get on them, you've got to have a four-wheel-drive truck to get through them. And then if you get on them, they're like this, and they beat your car to death. And we've been talking about those issues for the last 10 years, and nothing has been done. If I do anything, I want to go and try to do something, not just talk about it, not just do studies on it over and over and over, but actually fix the problem. We've got problems that need to be addressed, that need to be fixed. And talking about them, we've been talking about them too long. We need to actually do something. And if I'm elected, I'm going to try to work with the other four commissioners to actually do something, to quit talking about it and actually do something.
Thank you, Danny. I think this next question gives you a chance to expand on the issues. Oh, Sandy, I'm sorry. What is the very first issue you will try to change and how will you change it? Yeah, there's a lot of issues, but try to prioritize. Give us one.
I think, I think since I've been knocking on doors in the south end of the county for the last couple of weeks, stormwater issues are one of the most talked-about things in the south end. Because you see people with water standing in their, in their yards and almost up on their forges. And I can tell you, when you see some of those multi-million-dollar houses with, and water almost getting in, I can tell you that's not good. Something I haven't told y'all tonight is I'm certified in stormwater management. Used to be certified in three states, but I let, when I retired, I let my certification go in two states, but I'm still certified in the state of Tennessee. And I've, one of the last jobs I did was a $20 million job. And I've managed stormwater treatment for years and years. And at least I can look at a plan when it's designed by the county engineer, I can walk out there and look at it and tell if it'll work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Sorry, I overlooked you there. Danny, let's start with you on this one. And I think this gives you guys a chance to expand on that last question, and that is, what three goals will you try to achieve while serving your term? Explain how you would address those. Give us a little blueprint.
Well, the, the first thing I would do is try to be responsive to the, to the people who I serve, which are the citizens of the Walden County. I would, I think we need to have transparent government that is responsive to your needs. We need to begin to work on infrastructure to bring things like broadband and good roads, things that bring, will draw a quality business to Walden County. And there are certain requirements that we need, and we need to do those and start focusing on those. And the third, we need to make sure that our county government operates efficiently. You know, we are, our $100 million budget. There's a large amount of things that we could do to make that budget more efficient. But when you think about the number of supervisors and supervisory positions we have, and then you go out and you look at how many people we are actually doing the job, we have less people actually doing the job of operating and serving the citizens of Walden County today than we did 15, 20 years ago. But we've got a lot more supervision. We need to make sure that the people, that the citizens' needs are being addressed. And to do that, you've got to have boots on the ground. You've got to have people who are out actually doing the job, whether it's at Public Works or whether it's at the library or whether it's at the sheriff's office, the corrections, all those different functions. The first thing you better have is boots on the ground. And we need to make sure that we've got enough boots on the ground to do what the citizens of Walden County require. And those are the three things that I would report. Bye.
Thank you. Sandy?
Where are you going with this?
I am. Did you see how I jumped right on? Do you want me to repeat it? What three goals will you try to achieve while serving your term? Explain how you would address those.
Well, well, I think it goes without saying. For all the candidates running, we all want to see better jobs come to our county because that's the future of our county, is our children. I was raised up here and I never could make enough money working in Walden County to have all of the things that I wanted to have. That's why I work someplace else. And infrastructure, you know, my wife, her people was from Milton. She went to visit her, some of her kinfolk the other day, and it took her 45 minutes to get off of Interstate 10 and get on 331. Now, there's something, there's, there's something wrong with that. I think accountability is a real concern in this county. You have people working for the county, and if they drop the ball or if they're not doing their job, then if they're in the right place or they know the right people or whatever, then nothing's ever said about that or nothing's ever done about that. And, and we're going to have to get past that. And like I said, I don't work for the county, never have worked for the county. Don't have anybody in my family works for the county. And that's the only way you're ever going to get changed is if you vote for Sandy Jack Brown.
Thank you.
There's such a wide variety of issues placed in our county. Every issue is important to someone. I don't care who you are, it's important to you. And you think that's what being up in county before, or we've been focused on it that time. We have them on the beach. We have land development. We have public works. We have a right, right, you take Sheriff's Department, other issues. But what we deal with every day is important, it don't matter what it is. And our infrastructure needs are the most important thing to make sure that our people that visit our county, that work in our county, live in our county, have a place, safe to travel, go work. As we're looking at stormwater issues also, it's very important. We need to look at how we can address those issues. We're going to do a, go do a deeper study on what issues are important and like one or one prioritize those issues. And we continue to move forward. We need to look at how we can get these, the corridor on 331, how we can get it up and running, where we can get sewer or wastewater treatment plant going. Fourth is running, running county government, you've got to have good managers, good people in place to run. It's not, it's not a hundred, when you say $100 million business, it takes good qualified people. And you're not going to get good qualified people. They don't just vary $40,000, $50,000. They don't even come here for that. Any company in, any company in this country, they have good qualified people running their company. They don't go out and just hire anyone. So you've got to play with what you get. And we can look, look at it now, our county is moving forward. We're moving forward in a positive direction. And if good things happen in our county, people are at work, and people are able to have their businesses successful. Every business we have in South Walden right now is successful. They probably make more money now than they have in the past because of the tourism industry and all the people that's coming to our county. So if we look forward, we need to continue to let our county, let our county move forward in a positive direction.
You hate to see that, don't you? Thanks, guys. This last question, and we'll start with you, Sandy, and it's going to sound like a trick question, but one we should be asking all the county commissioners, I think. But which functions of the county commissioners do you think are being performed the worst and which ones are the best?
Well, you don't give us that much time to think. Well, I'll tell you, I'm, have some concerns about the TDC. It's true that we have some very successful businesses in the south end of the county. In fact, some of them is so successful, they don't have anywhere for their customers to park. And I think that, I know when I was working in Tennessee, I used to see the commercials for, "Go visit the Gulf Coast, the beaches of South Walden." And, and I already knew what that deal was. But with the TDC, I think that, I tell Mr. Bagby every time I see him, I think he's doing a good job. And I do think he's doing a good job. But I'll tell you what, I think that the TDC spends way too much money. that the TDC spends way too much money. And that's all I got to say about that.
We're always looking at some way to improve what we do. We're always looking at how we can cut costs, how we can save, save money. It's hard, it's hard for government to function without the proper people in place. And land development, you know, you hear people say, we're doing it wrong, and everything's wrong, and everything that works is right. But you know, it's, it's a lot of that schematic work by the state, we don't have, we can't land, land development code, we have to apply that. But we try to make it better, we try to look at how we can improve on, in that part. We hear about public work for it, grave roads, Danny talked about potholes, it comes, we've had floods, we've had plenty of floods this year. We're dealing with FEMA right now. FEMA will not let you touch a dirt road, they'll let you maintain it, scrape it a little bit, if you touch that road and there's really much, FEMA will not give you any funds for it. And, and the funds are critical, they're, we're going to drive right now, and we've got to go pass right now for improvement projects, that's putting millimeter on these roads to stabilize, but we will not have problems with these in, in the future. And if we do have problems with them, they'll come back and put that same, same material on these roadways. Where we had millimeter line road, we didn't have any issues with roads, they held up. And we're looking at the administration department and, and the attorneys, we, administration's running well, they're doing a great job, they moved, they, they come up with some great ideas, we're saving dollars there, we, we figured that, we saved a hundred thousand dollars. We saved a hundred thousand dollars in, in figuring and repaving the administration. Our attorneys, we've had several attorneys, we've got Mr. Mark Apers right now, he's doing a great job in trying to improve these, these functions that come under county government. And we'll continue to look at how we can save money, cut costs, and provide a service to the people who's represented.
Thank you. Danny?
I think the best thing that we have going for us right now is that we've got a lot of quality employees who are working hard for you and who are, are doing a good job. Sometimes, they're doing a lot more than they used to, but they're doing a good job for you. And I think the bad thing is, or the thing that needs to be improved is just fundamental fairness, and it starts with those employees. Because while those line employees have not had a raise of any significance in years, the upper staff has had raises. And I think, I'll begrudge them theirs, but I think we need to take care of our line people, the people who are actually providing you with the service, we need to take care of them. Another one is how we deal with citizens. A lot has been talked about the Senate corridor standards, and one of the things that I think was especially troubling about those Senate corridor standards is that while the county said that new businesses could not use a metal building, if, if you don't believe it, go read on it. That's fine, well and good, but then the county turns right around and puts a metal building up for a firehouse. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you are gonna tell your citizens they can't do it, the county government shouldn't be able to do it. And it goes on and on, and you see land development, we have one group that gets variance after variance after variance to build lord only knows what, and then the county's stuck with stormwater problems. And then you turn right around and you see somebody else that comes up there and they need every single part of the land development code, every single part of the comp plan, and they are denied for what reason, lord only knows, but I don't know, but it's not fair. If the code is wrong, change the code, but we need to make sure that the government is fair to each citizen. Every one of you should get the same shake as the fellow down there that's got plenty of money. And if I'm elected, I'll see to it, if I've got anything to do with it, everybody in this room will get a fair shake at county government. Thank you.
Thanks. I said that was the last question, but I want to sneak one more in, 'cause this is a yes or no, it doesn't need any discussion, you can, if, if you want to explain your position maybe afterwards when we open it up to, to the audience. And that question is, do you favor a business license?
I do.
No.
Thank you, thank you, Phil. Let's have the stool board, it's up here now.